Good evening and welcome. We're going to call this meeting order for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for November 5th, 2018. Roll call please.
President.
This is Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Bravo.
Here.
This is Lasher.
Here.
This is Mansfield.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Reverend Walker.
Yes, President.
Joining us tonight for the Pledge of Allegiance is Jamarius Pickett from Leggett Community Learning Center. Jamarius is a 5th grader at Leggett. He loves to read and his favorite subject is PE. He loves to play football, basketball, and soccer, and he's a huge Cleveland Cavaliers fan.
Wow.
He's very thankful for his amazing mother, brother, and sisters. So Jamarius, if you would come up and help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and if we could all stand. Come on over.
(inaudible) 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 And then can you tell us who brought, who you're supporting today?
I've known my mom, my principal, my friends, and my dad.
Very nice, and we're so proud of all the work that you're doing and we hope you keep it up, okay? Thank you for joining us today.[114.11][114.11](applause) And thank you for bringing him and for celebrating him today. We appreciate that. All right. Community and school reflections? Would anyone like to?
Well, I just wanted to mention Drink Day. Dr. Ford, who was a former Kim Moore graduate, she was just an awesome speaker, very inspiring, shared her journey with the students, how she left school and went to Harvard, did all these things, quit Harvard and got back into Harvard and eventually graduated. It was just a phenomenal story. She was very relational with the students and they really embraced her and what she did. She even left time for questions at the end and the students came to the forefront and they asked her questions and things like that and she spent time with them, you know, answering them and addressing that. It was just a great turnout and all the different colleges that were represented there for students to go by their booths and talk to them about something that may pique their interest as far as a degree program and things of that nature. So it was very insightful. I mean, I'm always amazed at the things that we do and how we continue to pour into our students' success and this was just another way to do that. Also attended a, I don't even remember the thing, remember the conference, the superintendents and all of those were like there also. I don't remember but the speaker, because I don't feel good tonight, I'm sorry, just have to share that. But the speaker, he was phenomenal, from New York. I don't remember the gentleman's name, but he was talking about, you know, the things that we should do, you know, in regards to students, like, don't lower the bar, raise the bar, because kids always, they strive higher. And they have such a great graduation rate and many of their students are college, they are in college or college-bound because they set the expectations that way. And they attain those expectations and they continue in that regard. But there was some very good words that he shared with us and about, you know, how to help ensure our students' success in the future. So, I'm just going to talk about those two things. There's several things that were going on between last board meeting and today, but someone else can take over from here.
Thank you.
I had the opportunity today to shadow a social worker for the Children's Services Board. I don't know if the camera can zoom in on that or not, but we do have an election tomorrow and we did pass a resolution at this table about issue eight. I just want to remind everybody about that because they do some very tough work there. It was interesting, I was at a table and there were, I think there was 10 of us going to shadow 10 different workers there today. And, you know, every one of them, it was interesting during the introduction, they were asking, you know, introduced ourselves, but each of the worker introduced themselves as well. And, you know, the one question they asked after they talked about how long they'd been there and things of that nature, you know, why do you do this job? Because it's a difficult job. Pretty much every one of them says, because we get to help families. And we're not always successful, but we think we do something and, you know, and there are successes as well. So, you know, I don't believe, if my memory's correct, they said that it's been decades since they went for additional funds. So it's been renewal. This one's asking for additional funds. The, I can't remember the executive director's name now off the top of my head, but she did state that the state of Ohio is 50th in funding. Funding.
Doolie Barnes.
Please, Barnes, okay. Doolie Barnes. But she stated today that the state of Ohio is 50th out of 50 states in funding for children's services. So anyways, for whatever that's worth, I think it's worth a lot, but it was a very interesting day. And just want to briefly say, and the majority of us were over at East CLC for the grand opening of the Firestone Complete Auto Care Center that's opening and going to be kicking off there. So I'll just leave it at that if somebody wants to add more about that one.
I was glad to mention that, but one of the things I like and always enjoy when we go to presentations like that is the excitement of the students, how excited they're even having the chance at the end and the excitement with on their own, which is really nice. So I wanted to thank them for partnering with us as well. That fellow's very, very good. Kids, when they get excited, like, of course they're going to want to learn, they want to come to school, so something's great. Thank you.
I have two quick things. Attended the Akron Roundtable Special Edition for Elevate Akron with Miss Mansfield. And it is so cool how College and Career Academies is a perfect puzzle piece into what the city is planning from its strategic growth perspective. So that was really exciting. And then the last thing I'll mention is an Equity Focus Group. Thank you very much to Carla Sivul for the invitation. I attended that with Reverend Walker. A really neat group of people in the room throughout our district, including third grade teacher, inter student teacher at the time, it was really neat. A consultant who was helping the rest of the state actually came to our district to do this focus group about this gap analysis that he's running on, really what equity should and could look like in the district. So it was very detailed work and wordsmithing work, but it was really a very cool group. I appreciate being included in that. Thank you.
I just want to follow up real quick on the Firestone. Right now, the East CLC Center is only open to staff, but board members are staff. And so I'm actually having my oil change and my tires rotated, so I will give an update about customer service. But they were very excited that I'm coming, so I'm sure I'll get, like, spoiled, but I don't know if the red carpet will still be there though. And wanted to quickly mention the Reach Higher Breakfast. I have a beautiful piece of artwork on my desk from, that I bid on at one of the tables at that. That was fantastic. And then the one thing I did for sure want to mention, in addition to a big thanks to I Promise for letting us come in to get our picture taken the other day, which was great. The Miller School, School for the Visual and Performing Arts, had their open house, their annual open house on November 1st, I believe it was, yes, the 1st. And it was the first opportunity that had been there since the new principle was put into place. And I can tell you that there is great enthusiasm in the building. One of the things that I enjoyed the most as a former Miller South parent was the tours for the building. Parents weren't just wandering about trying to find their way to things. There was a real, well-trained plan, harkening to our student ambassadors almost. All of the students had T-shirts that said, oh gosh, they might have said guide on the back? I'm trying to remember what they said. They were wonderful. They were bright pink, because those are Miller South colors, they're pink and black, so they had pink with black letters. Every group got, if possible, had a male and female guide so that whichever you felt comfortable talking to as a student, you could. They actually ended up getting so many people, they had to break down to one guide per family group. But they walked, they had a map that each student went to, they had, you got your passport stamped for each thing that you got to. So they got to all various parts of the building really quickly. There were, there was dance and drama at the end of both hallways on the second and third floor. So there was ballet as you're walking down the hall or, you know, a sonnet being performed as you walked down the other side, as well as singing in the cafeteria and jazz band and steel drums in the auditorium. So it was just a cacophony of celebrating the arts and I saw many people post online that I didn't even know had been there who were showing their appreciation and couldn't wait for their kiddos to go there. So loved seeing that use of the students and having them engage the community and talking about their schools. Great. Well done to that staff.
Just wanted to highlight the Reach Higher Breakfast again, and particularly the emphasis that they play on reaching our community and the Reach Opportunity Center. And Dwayne Krabs for tying in how the community helps and how we need to give opportunity to those who, it appears from the outside, will not be able to do anything effectively. But he was able to bring some community people, they were able to talk to him, share their thoughts, and that helped him to feel comfortable being in an uncomfortable situation when you go with a social worker to a house that's not maybe up to your par, but you have to learn how to walk in other person's shoes so that you can adequately do the job. And that was what is being done here with the Reach Higher Breakfast and the Reach Opportunity Center. And Summit Life, I believe, yeah.
All right. Because we have a lot on the agenda tonight, I'm going to trumpet my report, move it up, and someone mentioned this earlier, Tim. Just a reminder that tomorrow's Election Day. We don't care how you vote, we just encourage you to vote. Exercise your opportunity for your votes here. And as Tim pointed out, we did pass a resolution in support of issue eight for those people that may be watching. So please support our children in this community. We encourage you to do that. One of the highlights of my, the last group or two was being able to speak at the fourth year Resident Educator Program. And thank you, Karen, for helping and handling me through that. I really appreciate that. Leadership Program for our resident educators. Wonderful to talk to them about what it means to kind of work your way from now of public schools to leadership in this community. And also to get some feedback from them and hear what they think we're doing right and, you know, doing something right or can improve upon. So I'll share more of that later. Looking forward to spending some time with you guys this coming weekend and into next week for the OSBA Capitol Conference. Wanted to say thank you to Keith Lipton for facilitating the ass on this photo. And I think, though, I'm not sure, are you going to say something about Elevate Akron? And if not, we'll share more of that, I'm sure.
We have it under a committee report.
Okay. All right. So we'll have some of Elevate Akron under a committee report. All right. We do have a request to address the board, but we are going to save that until after we finish with our business. We have no communications or recognition, so at this time, approval of the meeting minutes. I'm looking for a motion for approval for the meeting minutes for October 22nd, 2018.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion. And a second. Any comments, questions, or discussions on the meeting minutes? Hearing non-oral calls please.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President. I have before me for your consideration, 38 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second on the personnel recommendations. Any comments, questions, or discussions? Any non-oral calls please?
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President. I have before me for your consideration, one motion and three resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
I just wanted to say that we extend our appreciation for two grants that we're directly supporting in operation and in instruction. The Burton D. Morgan Foundation is one of the, one of the grant givers for their continued support. We thank them for their continued support of our Design Challenge competition for our College and Career Academies specifically around entrepreneurial thinking. Also Summit Education Initiative for their support of our readiness coalitions in 28 of our elementary schools where elementary educators and early childhood educators in each neighborhood come together to plan activities to enhance the readiness of students transitioning into kindergarten, which is very important. You want me to continue?
Any other comments, questions, or discussions on the consent agenda ideas? Hearing non-oral calls please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President. I have before me for your consideration, six Business Affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So moved.
That's it.
We have a motion and a second on the Business Affairs recommendations. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Would like to point out that I had asked earlier about the ground sign replacements, number six, and that you hadn't heard as we kind of had worked on the work for the I Promise School, took a look around the district and looked at the other buildings that didn't have updated signage up front, and so that's what that is for, and so that's exciting. We'll have our APS logo, new logo, out in front of all of our buildings. Any other comments, questions, or discussion?
I was just going to say, number four, I had asked before, you know, that curriculum, the first learning platform, that's actually for the ID schools, is what I was told today. Yeah. Good. Thank you.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Just one thing, the resolution that the board passed recently regarding the 2018 graduation requirements, that was sent to Ohio eight, which was, and then along with the other union organizations, teacher union organizations and school boards, has been sent to the legislature. And so there are a lot of organizations that are supporting the extension of those 2018 graduation requirements for the next three years before the new requirements actually come into play. So I'd just like to-
Have you heard of any bills that are taking that up yet?
Yeah, there is one that some language was inserted into that might be acted upon. The target is by December, so I'll keep you posted on that.
I know, Mr. President, that there was some activity in Springfield where students were keeping track of what was going on, felt their need to voice their opinion about that. And of course theirs was to extend the alternative pathways because we know that's going to be very detrimental, not only to our district, but many other districts if something isn't done to help those students who otherwise are doing well, but just not able to get those 18, you know, credits.
Thank you. I give my report. Treasurer's report?
No reports.
Committee reports, legal contracts, and board policy committee?
Sure. We have several items presented for a third and final reading, so tonight we're requesting your approval. There's one new policy, one policy that we're recommending to delete, and six revised policies. So I'll read those real quick. Revised Policy 5610, removal, suspension, expulsion, and permanent exclusion of students. Revised Policy 5610.02, in-school discipline. Revised Policy 5610.03, emergency removal of students. Revised Policy 5611, due process rates. Revised Policy 6423, use of credit cards. Revised Policy 7540.03, student technology, acceptable use and safety. So then our new policy is Policy 8403, and that's about school resource officers. And then we are deleting Policy 9141 about our Business Advisory Council. So tonight we're looking for your approval.
So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second on the policies as read. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
Yeah, just have a comment and maybe, you know, just a question for later. But haven't really heard anything about how the Business Advisory Council in Cogga County, or it's not even Cogga County Service Center anymore, I forget what, Northeast Ohio, but I know we joined that. Just curious maybe sometime in the future here how that's going.
Sure, yes. I've had Beth Winter attend those meetings on my behalf because of some schedule conflicts, but they're providing a good amount of information. Their last meeting was actually at Lincoln Electric and looking at a welding program they have for young people to get their welding certification. So I've heard nothing but good things about that council.
Good. Awesome. Finance and Capitol Management? Oops, sorry. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All right, roll call please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
All right. Now Finance and Capitol.
No report.
What?
No policy.
Am I doing this right then? Yes. Okay. At your spots, there are two important resources that we want to encourage you to take a look at if you haven't read them already. At your seat are reports regarding the state of our economy here in Akron. There's been a lot of discussion over the past few months regarding finding both these reports. So these aren't things you haven't heard of before, I'm sure. The Two Tomorrows is from the Fund for Our Economic Future. That's the big thick one. This report gives the original, and it's beautiful too, it gives us a regional lens regarding job creation, job preparation, and most important, job access in our area. The second report is the Elevate Akron, Embracing New Fundamentals, and that's been mentioned a couple times today. It's a joint report of the economic approach of the city, county, and the chamber with support from the GAR Foundation. And that was, like Morgan said, it was a great presentation that we saw last Monday. APS has been at the table for all of these discussions regarding the implication of these two reports and their strategies to move our city forward. And as Morgan also stated, so much of what we see in our College and Career Academies really fits right into this overall message. The biggest message is the economy is stagnant, but not declining like many mid-sized cities are in our region and around the country. Our instructional policy team wanted to make sure you had copies of both because they point to key findings that Akron, that Akron's black population is excluded from economic opportunity and ranks among the nation's worst in terms of unemployment and decline in earnings. Our College and Career Academy work will be key as a strategy to improve this major finding. But we also have to work collectively at our, with our business partners to ensure they are already receiving our highly talented and diverse students who graduate after mastering all the competencies of our portrait of a graduate. So take a look at those proposals. Thank you very much.
And of course, the key to what you ended with, if our business partners don't have jobs available, if we're training our young people and there are no jobs available, that becomes even more frustrating, particularly for minority community, for the black community.
Or if they won't look to our students, right? If they're not willing to consider that. Yeah.
Any unfinished business? All right. We have several items underneath business, starting with the certification of Innovation Generation Scholarship.
Yes. In your packet, there was a resolution for the approval of our latest IGS certification, and I'm passing around a summary sheet for that. This will be our sixth certification since starting the Innovation Generation Scholarship Program partnership with the University of Akron. The beginning balance of IGS originally was $13,500,000. To date, with this latest certification, we've expended $2,414,367 in IGS scholarships with a current ending balance of $11,85,633. So on the sheet, you can see the total number of students serviced, currently 269. There are 55 students who lost their IGS eligibility since we've started the program. The average college GPA is 3.281. 54 of the 269 are first-generation students, 29 are minority students, 140 are female, 129 are male. Pale grant eligible students stands at 84, and the average amount per student is approximately On the bottom half of that sheet are the number of students from each of our high schools that have received IGS scholarship.
And we talked a little bit today about both where they come from in the clusters and recognizing too that that doesn't necessarily reflect school origin, so it may be someone that's in the Buckto cluster that's attending another cluster that then gets an IGS scholarship. So, but I think we are, we did discuss referring this to Finance Committee to look into a few things with the University of Akron, including how we can increase our use of the funds so that we're seeing them, seeing them spent a little more earnestly. But that would include maybe bringing back recommendations to this board as to whether or not this remains a last-dollar scholarship or not. So I'll open it up to questions or discussion, but it's-
We kind of asked the question about after Booker had zero, and I was wondering if those kids, some also will show a troop number, and then Easton, as well as Kim only had five.
Right. So we're going to look at those numbers based on their open enrollment. So some kids who may have opened and rode in the Firestone may actually be from the Buckto neighborhood, so we'll have that information.
How are those scholarships acquired? What's the criteria for getting them?
In the, in the packet, in the board letter, there's three criteria. You have to have a 3.0 high school GPA and a 27 on the ACT, or if you're in the top 10% of your high school and earn a 26 ACT score, or a 3.5 high school GPA and a 24 ACT score.
Have we looked at all about how well this is? I'm sure all of our counselors, I'm sure all of our staff do a really good job of making parents aware. I just, I do know that I'm still running into parents at this point who aren't aware of the Kent State Scholarship as well. We did announce that the same day we announced the College and Career Academies, so I think some of that got lost in that. I know we've talked about this, you know, for years and years. Is there a push for, for students to go? I mean, here's the thing too with IGS. I mean, let's be honest, if you can qualify for IGS, you're going to get into college a lot of different places. So you're going to have a lot of choices. So just because there are zero students that went to Buckto, maybe it's because those students that went to Buckto wanted to go to, wanted to get out of town, right?
You know, like I think last year at the Urban League, you know, the Urban League always has the one, I think it's the Firestone Scholarship to Kinsey. That's a full ride for all four years, so we have a variety of-
I was just going to say that I talked to the counselors at Buckto today just to answer because this question came up during scrimmage this morning, and they said that Kent State is the most common college, and the top-ranked kids are either going away out of state, you know, because they already have scholarships other places, or if they do pick a local school, it's Kent State because of these other oppor-
do pick a local school, it's Kent State because of these other opportunities and scholarships. So you can't... Ohio State has a great relationship with Bookedup, too. Right. Ohio State has someone there on campus. Right. On campus at Bookedup. We have a lot of students that go there for Bookedup. Right. So you can't look at these and say, well, kids aren't accessing, because they may be accessing lots of other opportunities and still being able to go to college at these incredible universities. And we love our University of Akron, and we love our relationships, so I'm not trying to say, you know, get out of town. I'm just, and I'm a alum, for heaven's sake, so, I mean, that would just be self-deception. But I'm just trying to point out that just because these numbers are this way doesn't mean that these students, they may be making different choices. Because if you can qualify, you can almost write your own ticket.
I still would like to see something other than a zero.
Sure.
That bothers me, you know, so I would like to, I mean, I don't know if we could do research to try to follow those kids, to see what they've done, so that we can actually see the truth in what, you know, everybody is saying around the table as far as going out of state or whatever. Because it's been... I was going to say that maybe if we get those kids who may have gone to Kent State or out of state, and just maybe a notation, so when people see this, the first thing they look at, they look at zero, and the question is why aren't any of those, you know, so maybe we put that together and say, okay, here are the number of kids from Bookedup, what they chose to go to Kent State, to, you know, University of Cincinnati, wherever it may be.
Right. This isn't the qualifying number. This is just the, this is what they chose. So numerous students would have qualified, they just might have made other choices. I guess that's what I was trying to say the first time.
And I guess with the superintendent, the president, is to find a way to make sure that we can use that money better. The way we are using it now, in maybe twenty to thirty years, we had talked about in the beginning, we thought this money would be gone in no time. And here it is, six years or so later, and we haven't, we've only used, we haven't even used three million dollars of the money. So we've got to figure a way to make it more appealing, so maybe it's not the last dollar, but something else. So those students who are competitive, and then they figure out, hey, I can get more money if I go to Akron U. It's not going to be just the last dollar, but something else that we can make a bit more appealing might be helpful. Maybe even turning those kids at a tipping point that will need it more. So I think if everyone's okay, I'd like to charge the Finance Committee to look into this, and maybe, I know the superintendent had mentioned getting together with the university as well, so. All right. With that, we do need a motion to approve the certification of Innovation Generation Scholarships. So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second on the resolution. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
All right. Renovation of four hundred West Market Street. And I see we have friends in the audience from LeBron James Family Foundation, in Akron. Where's Mr. Jim?
Yes, so we were approached regarding providing an upgrade to the playground area by adding a basketball court to the grounds of the I Promise School. And so in your packet is one rendition of approximately where that basketball court could be installed, and the resulting number of parking spaces that it would require losing in order to do that. And so in conversations with Mr. Lipte, we decided to put a resolution, since the board does have to approve changes to our facilities, and therefore, we have the resolution, which will basically allow us to work with the foundation on the plan, the ultimate plan, and to ensure that the project is installed with, you know, compliance with all of our board policies and procedures.
All right. Any comments, questions, or discussion on that? Mr. President, since we do have members from LeBron James Family Foundation, and I know there was, in my first reading, some concern about particulars. I don't know if we can hear from them, if they have any more particulars as to where's the money coming from, who may be doing the work, et cetera. We know the scope where you want it and those kind of things, but if there are any other particular things that you have or want to share with us that might be...
Any questions? Any questions?
I know it's a grant. What's the name of the grant? And I know it, there's a time sensitivity to the grant. If you can share those.
It'll be given to the LeBron James Family Foundation, which will in turn give it to you and the school system. It's from a partner of LeBron's, Two K Sports. He's the cover of the Two K game right now, and they have initiative where they're building courts across the country, and we convinced them that ours needs to be one of them, because this will be the best word. That's where, that's who we're working with.
That's the, so the folks that do the Two K sixteen, Two K eighteen?
The video game.
Well, my thirteen-year-old is... And then is it time sensitive to this?
Extremely.
Okay.
Yes. Like, they will start immediately if you allow them to get within their funding.
If the money's coming from somewhere else, they're going to give it to us, right? We need to accept it, right?
Any other comments, questions, discussion? If not, we do have a resolution to authorize the superintendent to work with the foundation to, so. Do we have a motion? So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second on the renovation of four hundred West Market. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next item and last item for new business is a resolution of approving an agreement for the filming of a documentary at the I Promise School.
Very exciting.
And Ms. Porter put together and worked on the agreement, so I'll let her explain what we're doing here.
No problem at all. This allows for a documentary film to be made with regards to some of the students in the I Promise School. I know there's some filming that has already happened on the outside, of course, the opening and such. The agreement is between Blowback Productions, they're from New York, very reputable company, came very highly respected and by Keith. I worked with Keith very closely, and there was a sticky point, which was a third-party beneficiary. We worked that out, and of course, we had to explain what FERPA was and all of that. So we worked it out, we've come to an agreement, and it's in your packet, and if you have any questions about the agreement, I know we discussed this a little bit before, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. But I'd like to thank Keith for helping with some of the particulars. Any questions?
I have missed some of them, if I'll read and forgive me, but APS has stated that LeBron James Family Foundation will obtain permission slips from the parents. Will we get permission slips as well, so that, I don't, I hope there wouldn't be any problems if they're getting them, but we get them as to that with other school students?
Certainly. If you look in your packet, as an exhibit, you'll see certain prohibited areas where they will not be allowed to film, bathrooms, locker rooms, I E P T meetings. That was agreed upon. Also included in your packet as an exhibit is a parental consent form, which protects the board from liability, of course, and it also gives us permission to share information. Also, we have an additional permission form or consent form that adults will sign, because according to Blowback Productions, they not only want to interview kids, but they may want to interview their parents.